Progress.
We are ready to start. So it's six oh four P M. September fifth meeting of the council is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the holder of the chair. Have a chance for you to see. Holder of the chair, please.
Okay, Sandy Flora.
Here.
Mike Isley.
He is on Zoom. And not visible, so Mike, if you do want to participate in votes, you will have to make yourself visible.
Spencer Kingery.
Present.
Cody Nelson, discriminating. And Dave Wickerly.
Present.
First is the review of minutes from the August seventh, nine thousand twenty-three meeting. Are there any additions, subtractions, deletions, or amendments to the set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Is there a second? All those in favor of approving the minutes as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next are the minutes from the budget workshops of August sixteenth and August twenty-eighth. Are there any additions, subtractions, deletions, or amendments to the set of minutes, to these sets of minutes?
No. Motion approved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as read. The department reports were included in your packet without objection. Those will be incorporated by reference into the minutes of this meeting. Are there any other reports? Not, we will move on to new business. Chief Lamar has a proposal to present for a lateral entry policy for the Delphi Police Department. The policy has been reviewed by the Board of Works and was approved by them. So this is now being presented to council for your review because it does have some budget implications.
I have additional paper copies if any of you should need one. It was amended during Board of Works, I apologize. I went to go make more copies with the amendment, but ran out of time. But the amendment, as you start to look through, under 1.4 procedure, we'll be adding no major disciplinary action, defining major disciplinary action as 10-day suspension or more. So the idea behind the lateral program is an officer needs to go to the 15-week academy and the academy, getting an officer in is getting farther and farther out. Instead of taking first in line, they're kind of triaging who's closer to their one year of service, which is when they have to have the academy done by. So lateral policy is done to try to entice officers from other departments and basically honor their years of service towards the items in this policy, including vacation incentive, specialty pay, longevity pay, take-home vehicle exception, and then the probationary period in pay. So if you want to take a look at that, if you have any questions about that policy, I'm more than happy to take.
More questions from the chief? Is there a motion to approve the lateral entry policy?
Motion approved as a number three for the Board of Works.
Is there a second?
A second for the event.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mike, are you voting?
Yes, am I here? Can you hear me?
Yes. Are you an aye?
Yes.
Motion carries. While you're still here, do you want to give us a brief update on the car situation? If the car is purchased or what we have at the border?
So the car that we purchased, it's a previously outfitted 2016 Ford Taurus. It's got a push bumper, lights, siren, console, and cage. It was taken to complete auto and got a clean bill of health. The only things that needed was an air filter and a license plate light. Since been taken to the outfitter where it will get radio, computer stand, printer and scanner that we already have that Sergeant Deckard got as part of the grant. And there's a couple of lighting tweaks that he'd done. One of the lights is partially burned out, so we're going to try. We're hoping that they have used parts that they can kind of piece together and get that done for us and get it on the road. I had a question earlier about if it would be marked. That's not clear yet. It'll be unmarked for the time being. We may be changing the graphics on the squad cars. So we don't want to put graphics on it now and redo them later. There's also been a call from some citizens about school zones that we've talked a lot about, about using an unmarked car in those areas. We still have explorers on order from Ford. I don't have an update. They were assigned VIN numbers and according to our sales rep, once they're assigned VIN numbers, those are going to be living, breathing cars. They were supposed to be built in August. So they are hopefully sitting in a sea of other explorers at the plant to be shipped out. And I'll work on getting an update for that to provide at a later time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Nate, why the request for an unmarked vehicle in the school zone? It looks like they would see a Delphi police car there, they're going to back off of the.
So it specifically came from the North Washington Street complaint. Some people were very vocal in parking a marked squad car there. I'm a fan of education plus enforcement. I'd like to educate and get people to slow down. If we have nobody speeding in school zones and in bus stop areas, that's a good day. We don't want to write people tickets. We want them to slow down so there's not an issue in the first place. There were some people in comments that said you should use an unmarked car. You should sneak up on them and get speeders and write them tickets. So it's to be discussed still, but there was an odd amount of people that called for unmarked cars where sometimes when police use unmarked cars, people will say, well, that's not fair. It should be marked. So there's benefits either way, especially with that vehicle that we bought. It could be a good training car. We just approved Officer Bernhardt was here tonight for some training at the academy. So that might be a good car for him to drive back and forth to training. And maybe our new officer, when he goes to the academy, maybe taking that unmarked car down there would be a good car for him to take. I'm a fan of high visibility, so I got to build that bridge in my mind to keep it unmarked, but I see some benefits to it.
I just love it personally when I see a police car, I always check my speed.
Well, with the new, so we purchased handheld laser radar that we'll be using in school zones. It's with the assistance of the Carroll County Prosecutor's Office. So super brief crash course in radar, our current radars, we have to be parked on the road facing traffic. With that laser, we can park perpendicular and basically shoot radar out the window. So I'm with you. I think a police car parked perpendicular in a school zone will be just as much of a deterrent. And again, I would rather people slow down than the alternative of writing people tickets, but we'll do whatever we need to do to get people to slow down. And I just want to take five seconds to also recognize from the department reports, police department numbers, I was over the moon about our, some of our numbers are up our foot patrols, our traffic stops. Officer Bernhardt and Officer McClelland are on duty. It's fastening to be up here tonight. Want to recognize everybody's working hard, but they're working hard as well. So I wanted them to be here and thank them publicly in front of the council for their hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your service too. This was good news. Okay, next is proposed ordinance 2023-8, amending the current zoning ordinance on signage, presented on first reading. The changes received a favorable recommendation from the Delphi Plan Commission and all of that information was in the pack. Is there a motion to approve this 2023-8 on first reading?
I make a motion for the amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
All those, is there any discussion? This is putting it in line with the new unified development ordinance. Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow passage of ordinance 2023-8 on second and third readings on the night of introduction?
So moved.
Do we have to go back and do a roll call on the first reading? His vote, yeah, if you want his vote to count, he should. So we're going to redo the vote for first reading of 2023-8 with a roll call vote. Sandy Flora?
Approved.
Mike Isley?
Approved.
Spencer Kingery?
Yes.
Dave Wickerly?
Approved.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow passage? We have a motion from Spencer to allow passage of ordinance 2023-8 on second and third readings on the night of introduction. Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy has the second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Sandy Flora?
Approved.
Mike Isley?
Yes.
Spencer Kingery?
Yes.
Dave Wickerly?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous, which is required to continue. Motion carries. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-8 on second reading?
So moved.
First from, by Spencer, is there a second?
Aye.
Second.
Okay, Mike. Roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-8 on third and final reading? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is proposed ordinance 2023-9, amending the current zoning ordinance on short-term rentals, presented on first reading. This basically allows short-term rentals in the B3 zone, which is all business. Changes received a favorable recommendation from the Delphi Plan Commission. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-9 on first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and allow passage of ordinance 2023-9 on second and third readings on the night of introduction?
Got a question. So does that also include not just bed and breakfast, but Airbnbs?
This is short-term rentals. So it is, there is already a separate section for bed and breakfast in the zoning ordinance. And the short-term rentals is already there for all the other zones. But B3 has residential allowed in upper floors, so this adds the B3 to short-term rentals. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow passage of ordinance 2023-9 on second and third readings on the night of introduction?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
This will be a roll call vote. All those, is there any discussion? Roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-9 on second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Sandy Beecham, if you're in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. It's going to be a roll call vote. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-9 on third and final reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote. If you're in favor, signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So the inner urban apartment is scheduled to hold a groundbreaking ceremony on September nineteenth at eleven o'clock a.m. While there are still some details that are being ironed out. Sorry.
Good.
The project is a go, correct, Alex?
Correct.
Yay. So they're requesting a parking easement on land that is owned by the city. The purpose of the agreement is to provide the full number of dedicated parking spaces to meet the zoning requirements for multifamily building. And that number is set at one and a half spaces per unit. Sixty-eight units, so that would require 102 spaces. And not all of those can be accommodated on the site for the apartment complex. So the purpose, the strip of land abiding the parking lot for the building, which is adjacent to Deer Creek, would include other parking spaces that could be used for a trailhead and so forth. So Alex Blake from Ironman Properties is here and can kind of walk us through this again.
Good evening. All right, just to cover the high level of the parking easement and then I brought a couple plan sets to show you where exactly we're talking about. We're working on the full legal description to define the easement. But the purpose of the easement, we've tried to increase green space around the property instead of just creating a sea of asphalt behind the building. What we wanted to do is create something that was properly well landscaped. And this easement will be over a current right-of-way, which if you went down there right now is mostly just a crushed limestone and fifty-two is a stone path. So we'll continue that improvement there. And then we believe that this dispersment of parking will allow us to create a visually appealing area and then also manage our drainage on site by creating actual rain gardens in the parking lot to catch all of the site's drainage before it filters off. So that's the purpose of this easement, is allowing us to create that. So what's included in there is a driveline and 30 parking spaces. We've got concrete curbs and gutters. All the finishes will be the same as we're using throughout the site. It will really be an extension of the project there into that. And then all of our landscaping materials as well. Our plan is to not just create an additional parking lot finished at the lowest level. We want this to look like our parking and it's integrated into the site. So if I can show you where that is. This key portion we're talking about here tonight, I believe Spencer, I showed you earlier. So, yep, it's this portion right here, parking, which is south. This is the property line that runs here. Everything south of here is owned by the city. And this is the old inner urban right-of-way where you see the utilities here. So our parking would sit on that. There's these spaces to the south. And then there's a little woodshed building that sits on this lot. In our survey, it's called parcel E. It's a little woodshed building that the water department has used in the past. It's currently vacated and in poor condition. And we believe that if we are allowed, this would create a substantial improvement in that right-of-way there and allow us to create, as you can see, this rainwater retention and disperse our parking across the site. Any questions?
So Marion, do you want to fill us in kind of on where we are with the legal side?
The agreement language is finalized in before you, right? That was in the back. The legal description is not, it was. That needs to be modernized. And then the legal description for the easement needs to lay on top of that. So the legal language is done, but the legal description for the estate is still pending.
And closing on this, on all of the transactions really is scheduled to happen probably through the next council meeting. So I think what we would be asking council to consider tonight would be approving the approving the easing, the parking easement pending the legal descriptions being provided and reviewed and incented upon by our legal counsel and then further granting authorization to the mayor to sign the documents once the legal descriptions are at hand. That way we could conclude this prior to the closings that are scheduled to take place later this month. Is there a motion to approve the parking easement agreement between the city of Delphi and Ironman Properties?
Make a motion to approve the parking easement.
I'll second.
I have a point of order. Sandy represents Metropolitan Title. She's employed by Metropolitan Title, which is doing the title work for this property. Is that?
If you withdraw, I'm pushing.
I'm thinking. I just, I shouldn't have thought that.
I was thinking about it on the way here.
I would think probably just whatever withdrawal for the sake of there's no.
A bear.
If you do not vote, David, you can't vote. You can't vote. You don't have a form in the room.
That's true.
So.
You withdraw your motion and I make the initial motion. Does it matter?
Are you working on this project?
Not personally, no. I do residential, not commercial. This is of course.
So you're not.
I think that's enough along.
Yes.
You're involved in this.
We would have had you withdraw the motion and had somebody else carry the motion.
I'll withdraw my initial motion.
Okay.
Then I'll make the motion. Just for the easement.
We have a motion from Spencer. Second from Dave Wickerly. And we will be taking a roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. And thank you for that. Thank you for the clarification as well. Let's see.
We need to make a specific motion for you to sign.
Yes, we do.
So I'll make that motion for authorizing the mayor to go ahead and sign the legal documentation once it is finished.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you and thank you for remembering that. We have a couple of policy matters here. Leanne, we had, at our last meeting, we passed, we approved the alley vacation for Craig on Arnold Street. And Craig's attorney presented an ordinance that relates to that. We've already made the approval, so we need to actually pass the ordinance itself.
That wasn't what you did? Okay.
There was not an ordinance presented.
Okay.
Presented it after, and he was not here.
Then, then yes, you do need, you've approved the vacation, but yes, you still.
So let's, this would be ordinance 2023-10.
On Arnold Street?
Yeah.
And this would be to vacate the alleys as previously approved on Arnold Street.
Did we have the actual specific purchases of the year?
Yes.
Yes, they were last, in the last package.
We had those the last time. Do you wish those?
I think I got that if you want me to pull up the people count.
I can make the copy tomorrow.
I can go back and find it. I was just having them in there for the ordinance that had been specified.
Oh, the alleys?
They're in there.
Yeah.
Is it in the ordinance itself? Yep.
Do you want to read the parcel numbers?
Here's his legal description. But he does not give me a parcel. So he did a legal description of both lots.
I'm looking at his notes as well, that's probably good. Just lots, lots one and two in clause addition.
Lots one and two in clause, clause addition of outlots. That's sufficient? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-10 on first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. All those in favor signify by aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-10? To suspend the rules and pass ordinance 2023-10 on second and third reading on the night of introduction?
So moved.
Spencer Kingery with the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mike Isley with a second. This will be a roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-10 on second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I'm going to take Mike simply because it's going to be easier. All those in favor on this roll call vote signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve 2023-10 on third and final reading?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Give the motion a second. Roll call vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Sandy Flora?
Aye.
Mike Isley?
Aye.
Spencer Kingery?
Aye.
Dave Wickerly?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The other thing that I wanted to just touch upon is that as we were doing the reconciliation with the proposed budget in Dayton today, I noticed that on the NVH, there was, the Community Crossings grant match was left off inadvertently, and so that correction has been made. So when that document comes back out to you, you will see that before the public hearing on, it is scheduled for October ten, October two. And then the adoption meeting is scheduled for October sixteenth. Vote goes at six p.m. And just wanted to give you some updates as well on a few of our projects. The Street and Water Maintenance Building is at state for design review. The project is expected to break ground this month with the building expected to be under roof by Thanksgiving, and the interior work is forecast to be done and completed by the end of January twenty twenty-four. So getting off to a later start than we had thought. They are using an FBI package, so the building should go up pretty quickly. Phase one of the wastewater treatment plant expansion project, the clarifier for that project has been selected and on order. There's a long lead time for those, so that work had to take place quickly, and they are now expected to be on site to mobilize at the end of this week. Next week, they will start removing the trees that are on the property and then doing the access road. And then all of the prep work for the installation of the clarifier when it is available. On the Community Crossings matching grant programs, the Adam Street project is moving along. All of the water lines have been installed and all of the structures are in place. We expect that urban sidewalk will be started this week, concrete work. And we did have a pre-construction meeting last Thursday on Indiana and Union Street, which is the next Community Crossings project, and they expect to get started on that project in October. I should say that the substantial completion date for the Adam Street project is September twenty-fourth, and it is not anticipated that the contractor will meet that date. So we don't have an idea yet as to how far the overrun on that will be, but it's not likely to be completed on schedule.